Roll call, please.
Chairperson Lopez.
Here, present.
Chairperson Cuevas is absent today. I apologize. Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Lomelli.
Present.
And Chairperson Medina.
Present.
And we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody to proceed?
Next item is the Pledge of Legions. Can you please stand? Moving right along. Do we have any corrections to the agenda?
There are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Next item is a public comment?
Yes. Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. At this time, the public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic that is not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Please show courtesy to others while providing public comments and direct all comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Palome. Do we have any public comment?
We do have speaker cards for item two.
Thank you. Next item would be the staff communications.
There are no staff communications.
Thank you. Next item would be the approval of minutes for the Planning Commission meeting held June 17th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Planning Commission held on June 17th of 2025.
Can I get a second, please?
All second.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Aye.
Commissioner Morales.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomelli.
Aye.
And Chairperson Medina.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you so much. And the next item would be to open the public hearing for, um, the public hearing. Starting with the first or first item. With the draft ordinance for a zoning code amendment to modify the Montebello Municipal Code, uh, Chapter 17, and establish a view shed ordinance overlay.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner's, item two before you this evening is a continued matter from the meeting that was held on June 17th of this year. Uh, and this is regarding a request to adopt Resolution Number 0825, um, recommending that the City Council approve a zone code amendment, um, to add the view shed preservation overlay in the Montebello Municipal Code. Uh, the purpose of the overlay is to protect and preserve public and private views of natural features such as ridge lines, hillsides, and culturally or visually important landmarks. Uh, Emily Fernandez will provide an update. Um, I believe she has some good information to share with the Commission. So, Emily?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and the public. The item I will be presenting is a continuation of the June 17th Planning Commission meeting regarding the proposed view shed ordinance. The item is a city-initiated text code amendment to amend Chapter 17 of the Montebello Municipal Code to add Chapter 17.41 View Shed Preservation to protect and preserve significant public and private views. So, in efforts to enhance community livability and celebrate Montebello's unique visual character, the city is taking steps to protect the scenic views that contribute to its identity and quality of life. This request is for the Planning Commission to recommend approval to City Council for this ordinance to establish a view shed preservation overlay. The view shed preservation map highlights areas that are built on elevated slopes or have scenic views with the proposed to preserve views of mountainous areas, ridge lines, skyline vistas, city lights, and significant cultural landmarks that are valued by residents and visitors. The focus is to maintain the community's aesthetic character and access to scenic views through adding limitations on improvements that include new structures or additions that block views and to manage vegetation that grows into view corridors. This will be accomplished by adopting a view shed overlay that establishes specific requirements for properties located in the designated view shed protected areas. During the last Planning Commission meeting held on June 17th, there are many questions asked by the Planning Commission that I'll give a little bit more clarification on today. The first question was regarding who has overall authority to define protected views. So, the City Council will, will consider and authorize the final adoption of the view shed preservation ordinance and map. When asked how this ordinance will affect new single-family homes, every situation will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and staff may determine a proposed multi-story structure may obstruct views and therefore require a visual impact analysis. Question three was whether new homes will need to conform to a specific style or be limited to a single story. New homes will not need to conform to a specific style or to a single story, although staff may require changes if a view obstruction is identified. Question four explores the possibility that there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's interpretation. That appeal would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and that decision may be appealed to the City Council. Note that the director's determination does allow for exemptions for unique situations. Question five refers to enforcement of the ordinance. The ordinance will be primarily complaint-driven evaluated on a case-by-case basis. The next question pertains to certain color or sizes for fences and vegetation. This ordinance does mean that fences will be subject to review of color and size and vegetation may also be subject to a similar review. When asked if the project will require a professional, if staff determines that a proposed structure or fence may obstruct views, a view shed analysis would be required to be completed by a professional. The last question asks about repairs or updating existing features. To answer that question, existing non-conforming structures may be maintained under the zoning code. Full replacements may require compliance with the view shed ordinance. So, based on comments provided during the last meeting, we have incorporated changes to the ordinance, including adding or altering definitions related to unfinished wood and reflective exterior materials. To keep consistency with the front yard fencing requirements, staff has determined to add a three-foot solid height limitations to solid fence, hedges, walls, or any obstruction, or six-feet limitations if the material is non-view obscuring. Solid walls, fences, hedges, or obstructions over three feet will require a visual impact analysis. This is an example of what a visual impact analysis can look like. The analysis should show the view that will be affected with the addition of a structure or a fence. If the project does require a visual impact analysis and is determined to have an effect on the view, the applicant will be required to incorporate measures that will minimize visual impact, such as additional setbacks or add architectural features that blend with the natural environment. On June, on July 26th, the city of Montebello hosted the annual Downtown Street Fest. The Planning Department hosted a booth for this event to gain feedback regarding the proposed view shed ordinance. During this event, 184 community surveys were completed, providing feedback for the proposed ordinance. Based on the survey, 70% of people did not know that the city of Montebello was proposing a view shed ordinance and 66 did not know what a view shed ordinance was. When asked how important it is to preserve views, 80% said that preserving views are very important. Based on the survey, the most important views to preserve are hillsides, open space, and views from public parks. When asked if restrictions on new development would be supported, 89% said yes. Only 5% were not concerned that new development could block or impact scenic views. Question seven asked potential challenges with the view shed ordinance and some answers included two-story buildings or development blocking sunlight. Question eight asked for specific locations or views and the most common answers were hillsides adjacent to the 60 freeway, Bluff Road, and parks. Case number PC 2025-006ZCA is considered exempt per the Common Sense Exemption 15061, a sequel only applies to projects that have potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and sequel Section 15303 related to new constructions or conversions of small structures. The public hearing notice was published in the Daily Journal on June 5th, 2025, and along with the meeting, the Planning Department hosted a booth at the Summer Street Fest to gain public opinion and we were also there to answer any questions regarding the ordinance. Additionally, there will be a pop-up that's scheduled prior to the City Council consideration. The staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 0825, recommending to the City Council to amend Chapter 17 of the Montebello Municipal Code to add Chapter 17.41 View Shed Preservation Overlay and to find and determine that the item is exempt pursuant to 15061 Common Sense Exemption and Section 15303 related to new constructions or conversions of small structures. So, thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for staff? No? Okay. I know we do have some speaker cards.
Yes.
And we can, uh, open public comment?
Yes, please. All right, um, I will call Felipe Acuna.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes at the time you begin.
Felipe Acuna. I'm here to speak on the overgrowth and the view blockage issue. Just read this. "Overgrowth vegetation can lead to a variety of problems, including, but not limited to, pest infestation, fire hazards, structural damage, health issues. It can also obstruct views and access and contribute to drainage problems." Now, these views that most people in our city pay for, being that I am a Realtor here, they'll pay 20, 30, 50,000 for that home just because of the view. And like anything else, you order a cheeseburger, you pay extra for the cheese, you want that cheese on that burger. These people want those views because that's what they paid for. Okay? Now, pest and disease problems, okay? Thick foliage provides shelter and breeding grounds for pests like rodents, insects, mold, and the potential to leading to infestation and spread of disease. I know that in this area here in Montebello Hills, because of what happened up in the, the new construction, a lot of those rodents are now coming down the hill. I've had complaints from clients say, "What happened? Where did all these rodents? Where did all these animals come from?" Okay? And because of the overgrown, um, vegetation that their neighbors have, they're living in there. Okay? Now, fire hazards, which is a big one to me, is their overgrowth and vegetation, especially dry brush. Some of your neighbors do not water the trees or the foliage that's up on the top of the hill if they live on a tier. They just let it grow, let it grow wild, and it's dry. I even had the fire department come to my house and review it and they said, "Because there's nothing in the code, I can't do anything about it." But I understand this is a fire hazard. Trees behind my house, bushes and come, are 10, 10 feet tall and half the time they're dry. But nobody can do anything about it because there is nothing in the books to help. Okay? And I've had code enforcement over there told me the same thing. There's nothing we can do. We have nothing that'll help us get to where you want to be. Okay? Structural damage, because of the overgrowth, the roots get under the fences. The roots get, get under the foundation, cause damage. Okay? Obstructed views again, that's one of the main reasons I'm here. Overgrowth can obstruct and block pathways in and out. If you have an easement through the property so that, so the electrical company can get through there, guess what? With all that vegetation, they can't even do their job. Okay? Uh, drainage issues, with the, the mosquito issues that we had here recently, the vegetation holds water, hold water. Obviously, it draws in mosquitoes, it draws in mold, which obviously can cause health issues for the surrounding community. Allergies and health, and health concerns.
I'm sorry, sir, do you mind wrapping it up? We're done with three minutes.
Yes, yes. Uh, and again, the wildlife issue. We have coyotes, we have, um, raccoons, skunks that come in. I have a video of, uh, of, uh, two coyotes that came into our yard and bit my Frenchie. Okay, so that is a real problem, not only to our animals, our pets, but to our, our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maria Knox. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Maria Knox and I'm here just to express my support on the approval of the resolution. Um, I was very impressed with the presentation that this young lady did, answering all your questions and also the gentleman that just spoken, the many reasons why it should be approved. And mainly, Montebello, the name says it all, right? Um, the hills are, the view from the hills when I walk is beautiful. A lot of people buy homes up in the hills because of the view and if it gets blocked, then, uh, it defeats the purpose of spending so much money buying a house up in the hills. So, um, I'm here just mainly to express my support on the approval of the resolution. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker will be Alexandra Bresenyo. Please state your name. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Planning Chair, Commissioners and Staff. My name's Alexandra Bresenyo and I live in, uh, North Montebello. And, uh, I just wanted to tell you today that, um, I don't know, I, I requested if you guys would see the brochures of when the Brighton Hills development was, uh, in construction. And I want you to know that there's a, a black banner. Uh, this, this document shows the nine plans of the different types of homes that you could acquire in the Brighton Hills development. And the big banner says Brighton Hills and it says "New Skyline Series" is what they used to call the homes. And it's, it read "Live in Hillside Luxury with Sweeping Panoramic Views." So, that was a major selling point to drive people to come to buy homes in Montebello and I just wanted to point that out. I, uh, somebody gave me this, this vintage brochure, so that was really nice. Um, another lady that, because she has mobility issues, she asked me to tell you guys, uh, two, two things. She said, "Hey, let them know that, um, they used to refer to the area when it was first constructed as Little Switzerland or the French Riviera." I've never been to the French Riviera. I don't know what it looks like, but she insisted I tell you guys this, so I am. And then she also said that, um, there used to be two large signs, one on Westmoreland and, and Wilcox that read "Welcome to Brighton Hills" and there was another one on Jermaine and Lincoln. So, she says she misses those. What happened? Why did they take them down? So, anyway, uh, just wanted to communicate that. And then also say, Emily, that was an excellent job and thank you Planning, uh, Department for, uh, I didn't know you guys were going to do what you did, um, at the street festival. That was, that's awesome that you guys did that. Thank you. Um, and also another question, um, uh, the meeting, in the meeting minutes, did that include the letters that folks, uh, submitted in, um, you know, regarding the ordinance? It included the letters? Okay, I, 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 okay, I didn't see them. Okay, I will take a look.
Part of the previous meeting, they were included, yeah.
It did include the letters? Okay, okay, I'll take a look. Um, what was the other thing I wanted to say? I guess that's it. I just wanted to let you guys know that, yeah, people buy for the views and, uh, let's, uh, protect them. I think it's fair and, um, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Just a quick point of clarification, the letters are part of the record. They may not, they may not be part of the minutes, but they're part of the record.
Our next speaker is Hambhar Carmiani. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Hambhar Carmiani. I live in 1505 El Camino Drive in Montebello, which more famous as a racket mount on one homeowner's association. So, we have 163 properties. I'm a president of the association, maybe last 15 years volunteering. So, about maybe 75, 80% of the properties has a view. So, I met many real estate brokers. I always get involved when the house going for sale. So, real estate, every two minutes mentioning the view, 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 view. So, that makes sense that everybody loves you. So, nobody talks about privacy. Oh, you have a private, you can run naked. Nobody see you, it's, you're perfect. No, nobody said that one. So, what happened, uh? Um, I cannot speak, speak from all of them, but if necessary, I can bring up together maybe 80 homeowners to fill it up this empty place. But, uh, maybe next time because I got very short notice about today. So, I totally support the ordinance of the view protection because it's very important. So, especially when a view properties, the regular price is, is over 50 to $70,000 more. So, that one means more property taxes, that one more financial budget to the Montebello City that, which one I support very, very strongly. I support our police department, anyone from janitor to all the way to mayor, support everything. So, I just wanna be supporter for the view protection ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hambhar. Our next, uh, public speaker will be, uh, Mr. David Matanga. Or should I say Mr. Treasure? Please state your name. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, yes, it's unusual for me to be on the side of the podium here. Uh, name is De Matanga. Felipe's my neighbor. We share the same lot. Uh, when I started to live in my property, I was able to see the city of Long Beach, uh, off in the second floor. The whole second floor, you can see wonderful views. All I see now is this wall of green foliage. I, I tried to trim it myself because it's going over to my side of the house. Uh, damaging my fence. Uh, I talked to the owner on the other side about him trimming it and he doesn't want to do it. Uh, but it does impact my property value. Uh, if I was to sell that property, it, one of the selling points would be the view. Uh, it kind of stops me from putting a second balcony so I could enjoy the view because, uh, my property has a beautiful commanding view of the whole back area, beautiful when there's no foliage. Um, in addition to that, it's also a fire hazard. Uh, this recent fires in Altadena comes to mind. Uh, the foliage is so thick there, anything can, uh, unite it and the whole block will go. And plus the fact we do have a vermin problem there. Uh, I've seen coyotes come in and out of the foliage and, um, that's also very concerning. Those are the byproducts, uh, of that foliage. So, I'm in favor of them clearing it out so we can better view and the side benefits would be, well, um, no fire hazard, no, uh, vermin. So, um, I'm in favor of this, um, this, uh, motion, so that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
That concludes our public comments. Thank you. Alexandra will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. I think the last time we met, um, uh, our goal was to help produce a sort of a common sense regulation when it came, when it came down to this, this ordinance, right? We wanted to protect, um, views as well as, um, as well as people's rights to, to, to their property, to what they have now. I do have one point of clarification and this was mentioned last, last meeting, but the, this ordinance applies to, to privately owned, uh, trees and foliage, right? Does not include, um, public trees?
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay. Um, how does that affect protected trees?
Like an oak tree?
Like an oak tree or?
So, the city, we, we don't have a, um, an ordinance, um, like other cities do where they actually, um, call out these protected trees. We would use whatever state guidelines are available, but, um, that would be analyzed on a case-by-case basis.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. I know, Commissioners, you guys have any point of discussion?
I, I have a question. Um, I, I think we discussed it last time, but I still have a question about the, uh, the payment of how, of how this upkeep would, would happen in terms of if it's a neighbor complaint-based or if it's, uh, I know one of the comments earlier were outside of privately owned spaces, right? Uh, the question of outside of private, uh, city-owned trees or foliage. So, uh, how does the upkeep get paid for that? Who, is it 50/50 for neighbors? Is it solely on the owner or, uh, how does that work?
So, that's a great question. Um, it, it, it would depend on the, on the actual situation. Typically, if, you know, if the ordinance is approved and there is a requirement to remove the vegetation, uh, then, I'm just using vegetation, but it could be, you know, a number of things. The Code Enforcement Division has, has a, you know, a process where, uh, they would go out, they would contact, uh, you know, the party that, you know, it's, it's subject to the complaint and, um, they would be asked to, uh, you know, remedy the situation, ultimately trying to close the case. Um, and then it would be escalated, right? But the cost would be on the, um, you know, the property owner that has the issue, uh, at that point um, with regard to this ordinance. In addition to that, if it was a new, let's say a new project, um, it would have to go through a review process, whether through planning and building and safety and then they would review it to see how it comports to the ordinance and the regulations. Um, so there, there would be no added cost other than the typical fees that are associated with processing a permit. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, so maybe this was already mentioned, but just to clarify, one of the speakers from just moments ago. How would a, um, for say, citizen, uh, who lives up in a scenic view area who has a complaint for say of, um, overgrown vegetation? And, um, would this, um, ordinance, um, trigger anything that homeowners can do in order to get this vegetation removed, um, for say if it's something that's government, I mean, city-owned? Yeah.
Emily, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've exempted, um, any, any- Emily, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've exempted um, any, 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 any city trees, any, you know, obviously, infrastructure, they're exempt from the, the ordinance, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll motion to approve the ordinance for a zone code amendment to modify Montebello Municipal Code, Chapter Seventeen, and establish a view shed preservation overlay. Resolution number zero eight dash two five, recommending the City Council approval Zone Code Amendment, number PC two, two zero two five dash zero 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 dash ZCA, amending Chapter Seventeen of the Mon, Montebello Municipal Code, adding Chapter Seventeen um, dot forty-one, view shed preservation overlay.
Thank you. Care to include the sequels?
To determine, and to determine and find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to the common sense exemption set forth under Section one five zero six one B three, which provides that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, considering that it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that adding a view shed preservation overlay will have a significant effect on the environment and pursuant to SEQA, Section one five three zero three, related to construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures. And the conversion of existing small structures that are consistent with the city's general plan, policies, and zoning regulations.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Of course. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomelli?
Aye.
Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody that came to support the motion. Appreciate it. We're gonna move on to uh the second or third item on the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, item three on tonight's agenda pertains to a proposed conditional use permit to allow the reconfiguration of an existing full-service auto dealership, Ford of Montebello, located at two seven four seven Via Campo. Daniel Ruiz will present this item tonight.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and the public. Tonight I will be presenting case number PC twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 five dash CUP, a request to modify CUP zero seven dash seventy-one. This request will allow the applicant, the Ford of Montebello, to construct an approximately twenty-one thousand eight hundred fifty square foot first floor addition, consisting of approximately thirty new indoor service bays, a vehicle display area, restrooms, a lunchroom, an elevator, and an equipment room for the elevator, as well as an approximately twenty-nine thousand three hundred square foot rooftop parking area consisting of fifty-seven par, uh standard parking spaces, and a separate inventory parking area at the existing Ford of Montebello Automobile Dealership located at twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo. On May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, Rorar Architect, the representative for Ford of Montebello, the applicant filed a conditional use permit application to modify CUP zero seven dash seventy-one to add approximately thirty service va, bays and various pertinent structures at twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo, the project site, within a new twenty-one thousand eight hundred square foot first floor addition to the existing Ford of Montebello Auto Dealership, and to construct a new twenty-nine thousand three hundred square foot rooftop parking and inventory above the first floor addition. On May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, staff issued a deemed complete letter. The aerial mapping this slide shows twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo, which for reference is located near the intersection of Via Campo and North Garfield Avenue, next to California State Route sixty, the Pomona Freeway. The project area for the proposed conditional use permit modification is identified by the yellow star, and the total combined lot area of the site is a hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet. The project area is currently developed with an automobile dealership originally approved in nineteen seventy-one, approved under CUP zero seven dash seventy-one. The current square footage of the existing building at the site is thirty-three thousand seven hundred five square feet. With the approved, with the proposed improvements, the total square footage of all structures at the site will be approximately eighty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-seven square feet. If this CUP request is approved, the previous CUP entitlement modifications will remain in effect. The project elevations shown here demonstrate what the proposed service structure will look like if approved. The first floor of the proposed structure is intended to be used for the approximately thirty proposed service bays, an inventory display area, and other accessory areas. The second floor of the proposed structure will consist of a total of fifty-seven parking spots and an inventory parking area. Combined, the first and the second floor of the proposed structure building, of the proposed structure will total approximately fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty square feet, with the maximum height of the structure reaching thirty-four feet and ten inches for the elevator tower, with the height of the rooftop parking area ranging from approximately twenty-two to twenty-five feet, depending on which elevation the height is measured from. The, the structure is proposed to be constructed primarily of gray concrete blocks with metal composite panels, as shown in the elevation drawings included here. Twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo is zone C two, general commercial, and is surrounded by the California State Highway sixty to the north, and commercially zone properties to the east and the west. Additionally, to the south of the project site, the Our Lady of the Miraculous Metal Catholic Church is located within the R-one zoning designation with the Civic General Plan land use designation. Excluding the church, the immediate surrounding land uses are designated general commercial, which is fully compatible with the proposed automobile service area expansion. It is not anticipated that this specific proposal will have an adverse impact on adjacent or budding properties, and mitigation measures are included within the project to ensure that the Our Lady of the Miraculous Metal Parish is notified in writing of the activities associated with the construction of the proposed project. Regarding the environmental review, case number PC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 five dash CUP is considered a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA definition. An initial study slash mitigated negative declaration was previously prepared and approved by the Planning Commission on August second twenty-sixth, uh, August second, twenty sixteen, for proposed modifications at the project site. The initial study mitigated negative declaration determined that with mitigation measures, the potential environmental impacts can be reduced to a significance threshold of less than significant. An addendum to the previously approved initial study slash MND was prepared for the proposed project to the, pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Guidelines, Section fifteen one six four A, and none of the conditions calling for the preparation of a subsequent EIR under Section fifteen one six two have occurred. On July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the three hundred foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the subject property. And on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the public hearing notice was published in the Montebello News. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number zero nine dash twenty-five, approving the modification to conditional use permit number zero seven dash seventy-one, with conditions to allow the reconfiguration of the existing automobile dealership located at twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo, including the construction of approximately thirty new indoor surveys, service bays, and related pertinent structures within a new twenty-one thousand eight hundred fifty square foot first floor addition, along with an approximately twenty-nine thousand three hundred square foot rooftop parking and an inventory area for the property located at twenty-seven forty-seven Via Campo. Additionally, staff recommends the Planning Commission determine and find that the foregoing actions will not include substantial changes and/or cause significant effects to the environment as described in SEQA Section fifteen one six two, nor result in any new impacts or increase of significance of environmental impacts beyond those identified in the previously approved initial study mitigated negative declaration, and therefore approval of the addendum to the previously prepared MND is appropriate. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions or comments, as are the representatives for the proposed project.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question, or um?
Please.
Will the entrance to the service uh area, or you know, uh, service entrance uh off Via Campo, will that still remain the same?
Yes, there, there is the, still an entry, uh, where it was previously. There's a buffer of separation in between where the structure will, will be actually placed, but the same, it has the same entrance that will, as, same two entrances as what was there before.
Because I'm a, a Ford um owner, and I, and that's where I get my service done. Uh, and sometimes I try to avoid it, because I remember how narrow that uh service entrance is. And the experience I had there was that there were too many cars there parked, and to get out, I had to reverse, instead of going around. And it's very, um, I don't know how the planning was there, and um, yeah, that was kind of an experience. Before, so that's why I'm, you know, trying to see here on the site plan, um, is that still remaining the same?
I mean, in, in this case, the, there is an additional rooftop parking area that will be proposed there. I, I believe that should clear up some of the additional inventory parking that they, that is spread out throughout the entire first floor as it is now. In this case, uh, as, as you enter, I mean, that would be up to the Ford of Montebello to where, where they, they place their vehicles, but there is additional inventory parking for them. There's also an additional fifty-seven parking spaces for them on the roof. I think that should help to alleviate some of the traffic congestion that, that you've noted.
And I don't know if Ford is here and, you know, hearing, but, but, yeah, okay, thank you. It's not a complaint, just.
I'm sure we can ask the representative once, once they, they tell us about it, but my question is to the uh, R-one zone. Even though it's an R-one zone, it's, it has a commercial use, be it the uh church?
It has a church and a, it's also a school for, for the church on that property to the south.
But there aren't any proposed changes necessarily adjacent to, to that lot line?
So in, in this case, the Planning Commission last year, they uh, the Planning Commission approved the project that was a, a modification to this site as well, but the applicant decided not to proceed with that project that's proposed last year. In that case, it was closer to the south. I would say that, that, that project had more of an impact to the adjacent church due to the, it's, uh, it was a lot more, uh, approx, approximately a lot closer to the church. In this case, the modification is being shifted to the north. So I, I was, I would argue that it, it will have less of an impact uh, to the adjacent church.
Thank you. And one last question for staff before we hear from the applicant. Is this gonna be within the view shed ordinance, within the boundaries?
No.
No?
I'm not sure if it's within the view shed ordinance or not, but as a part of the uh mitigated negative declaration, it did analyze the aesthetic impact to any, any of the visual surroundings, and it was determined as a part of the anal, the environmental analysis that there would not be an impact to any visual aesthetics in the vicinity.
Good to know, good to know. But we're confident that it's not gonna be within the, the map, the overlay area?
My, my eyesight's not that good. I believe it's in this, I believe the location's in this area here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any more questions for staff? No? Thank you very much, and I'll give the owners an opportunity to, to maybe tell us a little bit more about the project.
Thank you.
Do I have to open public comment?
Good evening, Chairman and Staff. My name is Robert Plant. I'm from twelve oh six Via La Mason, San Clemente. Uh, I've been working on this project since twenty sixteen. The original design, we were looking to move the service drive to the other side of the building. Um, in the second go-around, we decided to keep the service drive where it currently is. We're trying not to change many of the, uh, the physical presence of the building, so when customers come in, they're familiar with it, versus changing it all up on them. It does pose a, a little bit of construct, of confusion for them. Little bit about my background, I was a facility architect at Galpin Motors from two thousand three to two thousand seventeen. Two thousand seventeen, I retired at Ford Motor Corporation, grabbed me and said, "We need you to work on this Ford store and this Ford store." So I do a lot of Ford store work. Very proud of this project. I've been working with the owners again since twenty sixteen. We think we have a very good proposal. We've downsized some of the facility. We've really worked on um, the flow around the site. We're going to try to correct some of the issues that you have by moving the inventory to other places. A couple of other things that have recently happened. The owner is in the process of purchasing another service building, which is on the other side of town, back over by the Maple Property that I was in here on earlier to put a warehouse on. Um, that property, we can put another, we're looking at somewhere between twelve and eighteen service bays, which will take some of the load off of this building, and also give you the opportunity where you can, we're working on that now, where you could bring your car in at that location, which is a much quieter neighborhood than where the car is, where the dealership is now. One of the main design factors, moving the building, moving the service from the rear to the front, was the advantage of being on the freeway. The freeway's really important to a car dealership. It's a lot of free advertisement. By putting the deck up front, we can raise the cars up higher. We'd like to light the deck so that you can see it more from the freeway. It'll give it more of a superstore appearance. Several of the Ford stores away from the freeways have closed around um, the LA County area and Orange County area. This store is not. The store's service activity just keeps growing. A key to any community, a lot of times, is its car dealerships. Many times when I've been in there, it's like, wow, there's the Caltrans fleet. They're all in there for service. Same thing with your fire department. So I think this is going to be a very positive move for your city. The fact that the service is behind eight-inch uh concrete walls will help reduce the sound in the community. We're currently there, basically what's called California stalls, where the stalls face, you know, the uh extremities of the site, and the sound migrates into the community. In this case, the sound's gonna be more concentrated. And then the cars parked on the roof, and hopefully this will clean up a lot of the traffic issues with it. In addition to the other buildings that the owner is looking at, should help bring that kind of down. One of the key purposes of the other building is to move some of the big truck that they work on to the other site. The trucks are difficult to move around on a small site like this one. This is one of the, I'll say, narrower, more constrained sites that I've worked on. I've got a couple of these that are in Hawaii that are similar, but you usually don't see them like this in California. Usually have a lot more land. With that, the materials in the building are all basically from the Ford palette. Uh, again, I tried to give it more of a Ford feeling. Any questions you might have with me on the project?
Do you anticipate, uh, you, you said that, that the combination of uh constructing this building and other buildings that are not necessarily within the city of Montebello will alleviate some of the uh, uh, traffic, for lack of a better word, that goes into the building?
That is a purpose, right. It, it's, the staff even has a tougher time trying to move the cars around and sell cars in, in this very restricted property. I know the owners for years have been trying to buy surrounding properties with no luck.
Gotcha. And the reason I was mentioning is that I travel that street often. And oftentimes, there's the traffic that's making a right turn onto Wilcox, heading eastbound on Pomona, backs up to, behind the uh, the dealership. So I would just hate to make that worse with additional trips, but.
There's, um, when I came to Galpin, they had a really big problem with their service drive. Their service drive, they're taking about three hundred cars a day. The service drive traffic was crossing over um Lancashire and, or not Lancashire, was crossing over Roscoe and was causing a lot of problems with both pedestrian traffic and what have you. I reworked the traffic drive for them. We widened it. One of the key things was basically scheduling the appointments coming in. We ended up with a call center at that particular uh store, where pretty much if, they only allowed a few people to come in just off the street. Majority of the people were basically scheduled throughout the day. That way, it's not thirty cars coming all at once, trying to drop their car off at seven, saying, take their kids to school. You schedule them through the day, and you break that traffic down to where it becomes a little bit more manageable. Those are things I've talked, you know, on the side with the owner on, you know, trying to calm that down. That will help. Uh, you're starting to see more and more of that, and it's getting easier and easier with people using the internet with their cell phone of scheduling and making appointments versus everything is haphazard. everything is haphazard, and you just show up and hope your car gets serviced that day.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a question. Will there be any other entrances from the side lot, I guess, closer to Garfield Side, which I believe is where the Dollar Tree is and the other stores?
We can't cross over the property line into their property. The owner would love to, to take test drives with the customer cars that come in, but the adjacent owner has not been exactly friendly.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions for you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one point of clarification for staff, and I apologize, I should have done this earlier, but the reason this item is before us is because it exceeds the 5,000-square-foot threshold, correct? Or are we, is it asking for other aspects?
So in this case, the project, the Ford of Monobello already had a previously approved conditional use permit? In this case, because they're modifying the site in a way that we thought was not in substantial conformance with anything that was approved there previously, that's what triggered the modification to the site. Typically, when a conditional use permit is required for a project, a separate site plan review is not simultaneously required. So it wasn't necessarily the threshold, but staff determined that this was a major modification that would merit bringing it back to the Planning Commission for review and approval.
Understood, okay. But aside from that, we're not, they're not asking to, for reduced yards, they're not asking for an increase in height?
No, technically, the original, there was an original project, or original, it's had so many modifications, but in 2016, the Planning Commission approved the 112,000-square-foot structure. That would have actually been a three-story structure. In this case, the staff, or the project applicant, has continued to modify that version of the project, and so this is actually a downscaled version of what was originally approved by the Planning Commission back in 2016. But it's, because they haven't proceeded with the approval or with the actual construction of the site, they've had to continue to come back for modification. And so at this point, fingers crossed that this is actually built and constructed.
Gotcha. Now, as part of the original CUP, were there any restrictions, developmental restrictions that would limit height, area, things like that?
No, so the original CUP was very vague. It was approved back in 1971, so there wasn't too much language restricting it. In this case, the project, the height restrictions that it would have to abide by is what the current municipal code says, and the project is consistent with the height restrictions that are in place now. Technically, in a commercial zone, the height is, needs to be accommodated by the floor area ratio that's allowed for the site, but in this case, or if you're adjacent to R1, the portion of a structure within 15 feet of the residential portion will not be allowed to exceed 35 feet. But aside from that, there is technically no height restriction, aside from what can be accommodated by the FBR in the commercial zone.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions. Any questions for staff? No? Can I entertain a motion?
I'll entertain the motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Give me one second. Let me close public comment. Oh, is there any public comment?
Do you want to open the public here?
Let me open the public comment.
We do not have any speaker cards for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please approach the dais. Thank you.
No public comment, I guess I want to close public comment and bring it back to the group for motion.
I motion to approve the modification to conditional use permit number 07-71 to authorize a reconfiguration of the existing Ford of Monobello Automobile Dealership located at 2747 Via Campo, including the construction of an approximately 21,850-square-foot first-floor addition, consisting of approximately 30 new indoor service bays, a vehicle display area, restrooms, a lunchroom, an elevator, and an equipment room for the elevator, as well as an approximately 29,300-square-foot rooftop parking area consisting of 57 standard parking spaces and a separate inventory parking area proposed project.
And the SEQA determinations as well.
The SEQA determinations?
Oh. And determine and find that the foregoing actions will not include substantial changes or cause significant effects to the environment, as described in Section 15,162 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, nor result in any new impacts or increase the significance of environmental impacts beyond those identified in the previously approved initial study mitigated negative declaration. Case number CUP 07-71, MOD 02-16, and therefore, approval of the attached addendum to the MND is appropriate.
Thank you, and I will second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Lomelli?
Aye.
Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, that looks like it's our final public hearing item. We'll move on to the Planning Commission orals. The Planning Commission orals? Nope. I want to welcome our new city attorney.
I don't want to take Arnold's spot, so I am the deputy city attorney for the commission. Thank you. Marina Ramirez, by the way.
Welcome, welcome. Other than that, I, can you? Nope. Our next item would be to adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much.
No good deed goes unpunished.